This regular meeting of the Board of Education for January 9th, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board's website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all Board meetings. She should be in the back somewhere or the front. Nope, she's straight ahead. Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening. I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they'll be interpreting, and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Lucia Cabejos, interpreta en español. Si necesitan voy a estar al fondo. Gracias.
Thank you.
Before we get into our agenda items, I'd like to provide an overview of the business the Board will be conducting tonight. We'll start with the recognition of Marysville's mindfulness. We'll have a report from our superintendent, public comment. We'll also consider a resolution regards to ballot measure 101, a statewide measure that will be decided on the January 23 ballot. The Board will also vote on a corrective action plan in response to PPS's financial audit, and we'll receive an update from the 2017 bond environment, health, and safety and accessibility. The facilities improvements and lead-in paint water remediations are a priority for the Board, district leadership, and staff, and we are having quarterly reports. We'll also have a Board leadership vote and a vote on the Oregon School Boards Association Legislative Policy Committee's position number 19 for which one of our Board members, Rita Moore, is a candidate. And finally, there'll be one appeal for the Board to consider. I do want to announce at the beginning of the Board meeting that we will not be voting on the Franklin name complaint that was at a level two. The complainants have agreed to a postponement of the Board's vote to hear the appeal until May 31st so that there's enough time for the full Board to consider potential revisions to the naming policy and for legal counsel to determine if the current naming policy already disallows the use of the Quaker name. I'm going to change the order of the agenda briefly tonight. We are going to start with the Marysville group, but I'm going to move, before we move to the other agenda items, move through all of the items in which they require a vote. I have a personal family situation which I have to leave the meeting, and I will be voting on the items, and then I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Moore, and I will call in and listen to the remainder of the meeting. So with that, I'd like to ask Director Anthony to recognize Maryville and their mindfulness program.
Thank you. Mindfulness is the nonjudgmental and compassionate moment-to-moment awareness and acceptance of one's thoughts, feelings, and sensations. This is Marysville's fifth year in using mindfulness as a tool for school transformation. Marysville's practice is creating an ecosystem of care for its entire community. Over the past five years, they have seen a significant decrease in student referrals, increase in self-regulation, and an increase in staff and student happiness. Marysville's teacher retention is up. Nearly every month, they are hosting people from other schools who are interested in seeing what is possible for our children. Marysville students practice mindfulness daily and are teaching pro-social skills bi-weekly. Mindfulness is integrated in all that they do. And now I'd like to introduce Lana Penley, Principal of Marysville, who will give us a description of the program.
And I've invited Madeline, our teachers, to be here with me today. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our school. Marysville is a special place, and I know several of the Board members today have visited us. Good to see you again. Tonight, we want to tell you, take a few minutes to tell you just a little bit about us, and we have a little surprise for you at the end. I've been fortunate enough to be the principal at Marysville for the past 10 years. I think that's some sort of Guinness record, huh? And the main reason that I've been able to do this is through mindfulness. As you know, our school had a major crisis in 2009. It was devastated and left us with a collective trauma. And that was before we knew much about trauma and the imprint it leaves on our brains and on our minds and on our bodies. We did not know how to recover, but we knew we wanted to recover together. With time, reflection, and desire to do something different, we set out on a new path. You know, when things go bad, you can use that as a reason for things to get even worse, and you have every excuse to be able to do that. Or you can use it as an inspiration to choose a new way, and that is what we did. We are now in our fifth year practicing whole-school mindfulness, and things are going great. Test scores are up, referrals way down, and happiness all around. We're not perfect. We have struggles and problems, just like every other school, but now we have better tools to be able to help us navigate. What started as something small, the adoption of a "Mind Up" curriculum five years ago, began to take hold. We saw changes, some small, some large, but shifts began to take place. With the added attention and practice of mindfulness, I began to see the importance of nurturing myself as the leader. And when I began to feel more nurtured, I began to show up different and nurture others better. What started as a moment has become a movement. The theory of change is that when we nurture the adults, the adults show up in a different way. And downstream, this does mean student outcomes improve. We are building a community of care, and with this, over time, the entire ecosystem changes. I want our school to feel like a home, a place that feels different from the moment you walk in. And the building blocks of our house is our amazing staff. I would like to turn and recognize the staff of Marysville. This is the strongest staff I've ever been a part of in over 20 years of education. We are positive, happy, community of doers. For we know that connection must happen first in the classroom, and that does not come without presence. Presence, a sense of being with, and presence comes from mindfulness. At our school, we study neuroscience. We know the parts of the brain, the impact of trauma, self-regulation, and why that matters. And we know how being excluded can create divides that are hard to reach across. And we also know, as adults, being a part of something meaningful with others we care about gives our life a sense of purpose. In closing, at Marysville, we want nothing more than to reimagine schooling. Yes, reimagine what is possible, not just for Title I schools, but what is possible for all schools. To think of schools as places of art, and to think as teachers as artists. To think of schools as places of healing, not places of harm, where the general equation is not compliance and consequence, but of care and compassion. And the primary focus is not on common core, but is on our common humanity. And most important, to think of schools not as test-taking factories of learning, but as soul-touching places of love for all, staff, students, and families. Thank you.
My name is Madeline Allen. I currently am in my fourth year teaching middle school humanities at Marysville. The year before I came to Marysville, I was a PPS substitute. Subbing is quite a gig. I am grateful for the perspective of being a guest teacher at 21 PPS schools. Time and again, I returned to Marysville on various assignments. Even then, right out of grad school, I could tell that Marysville was different from the schools I'd been in. The teachers were happy, and it was palpable. I took a .6 FTE at Marysville over other full-time opportunities because I knew it was a school where I mattered. Ms. Penley outlined a lot of the things that make Marysville a special place. There's one thing she left out, and I would like to take a moment to speak on that now, and that is teacher retention. The fact that Marysville is a school practicing mindfulness and a school that boasts nearly 100% teacher retention year after year is not a coincidence. Teachers will return to buildings where they feel valued as people and professionals. Teacher retention is an equity issue for this district. Every student in every one of our schools deserves a staff that wants to come back year after year. Our district is certainly experiencing some turbulent times right now. In the din of all the voices jockeying to be heard, I want to say here that teacher wellness is crucial. We can have new buildings, new technology, new scopes, new sequences, new everything, but if staff well-being is an afterthought, we will always be fighting an uphill battle. I am grateful to work at Marysville, and I thank you for the opportunity to address the Board tonight. We have one more staff member that's going to come down for some gifts.
May we introduce the famous Mr. B.
Good evening, folks. We thought we got together as a staff and decided, what was the Marysville way to spread some of this mindfulness? So, Guadalupe, we have a nice gift basket for you, spreading some mindfulness to you.
You have a yoga mat in there.
A stress ball.
You have a stress ball. You're showing Mr. B. the stress ball. He might need to know how to use that stress ball. Okay.
He can figure it out.
And then our staff has some gifts, some cards for all the Board members, to show our gratitude to you and then to spread a little mindfulness to you as well. So, these are handwritten cards by our students.
We'd like to give a round of applause to everybody, and thank you to the Board for all that you do.
We had the school fire, one of the biggest crises that's ever happened to Portland Public Schools.
All 500 students and staff at Marysville School escaped the massive flames. At the time of the fire, Lana Penley was in her second year as principal.
I'm surprised by it. I haven't had a lot of emotion about it in a long time, but what I feel right now is two things. There's the sadness of what happened, and there is such a gift that has brought myself personally and the school to the place we are right now.
When Marysville reopened in January of 2013, they decided to try something different.
Well, the truth is, there was a lot of pain still there, and there was trauma still there, and we were coming back to the place where the trauma happened.
From the ashes, they embraced mindfulness.
Mindfulness is all about showing up fully present with a sense of kindness. And imagine a school where everybody's trying to do that.
And she says what's evolved is a school-wide ecosystem of care. This is how students and dedicated teachers and staff start their day.
So let's show them how we do a brain break.
It makes me feel calm and nice and ready to learn. And we breathe until she digs it again.
Middle school students are very emotional, and they're very kind of all over the place when they come in in the morning. We all want to get them in the right, good place, and they recognize that they need it.
As part of a curriculum called "Mind Up," students learn how their brains work.
The prefrontal cortex, which is the front of the brain, the part up here, it's the mindfulness, the decisions that overcome the non-mindful, which is like the amygdala, because the amygdala, most of the time, wants you to start punching and reacting extreme.
And bring your other foot up.
This year, the school is also incorporating yoga.
Does it feel a little easier to balance?
As students learn to navigate things like stress and anxiety with positive responses and an optimistic outlook. And the principal says they're seeing results, like fewer kids sent to the office and higher teacher retention. And academically, Marysville is now the top-performing Title I K-8 school in the Portland School District for math and reading.
They are my teachers every day, too. I see them practicing it, and it reminds me, whoa, I gotta check myself. I feel they are really special, and the world needs to learn from them and what they're doing.
In southeast Portland, Amy Fraser, .6 News.
That was awesome. Thank you for all coming tonight. And I want to say, as a community member in 2009 who helped the Marysville community move from their building over to the Rose City Park building, and to see the entire building, all the classrooms moved in five days, all reset up, it was an amazing testament to leadership of all the staff and sort of getting the kids back in the classroom as soon as possible. And I think this is great to see that you took what was a really traumatic event to your school community and made it as a positive inflection point for all your students. So, thanks to all of the staff that are here tonight and those that aren't, and thank you for -- we maybe can use these over the next month, so thank you all for coming.
And frankly, we might take a page out of their book and think about how we start our meetings. And I'm serious.
Is that Superintendent Guerrero starting with a little yoga pose?
I got my mat. It might not be a pretty sight, but...
Okay, Director Rayly, you're going to be on point for that. So, thank you again for coming tonight. Great way to start the meeting. So, as I said, we're going to start with our agenda items that require Board action, and the first item would be consideration of a Board resolution on ballot measure 101. And I'm going to ask Director Moore to introduce it, and I also believe the Intergovernmental Legislative Committee may have discussed it today, and so Director Konstantin, if you want to add in or provide committee's thoughts on it, it'd be great. Go ahead, Rita.
So, this is a resolution in support of measure 101. If you have received your ballot and opened it, it's on the ballot due by 8:00 PM on January 23rd. And this is a ballot measure that is intended to support a legislative action taken at the last legislative session in response to a budget shortfall that appeared unexpectedly. And it's intended to increase existing fees on hospitals, insurance providers, and the revenues will be used to support Oregon Health Police, the OHP, which stands for...
Oregon Health Plan.
Oregon Health Plan, thank you. And the Oregon Health Plan expanded, almost doubled in size. The number of people covered by the Oregon Health Plan almost doubled in size after the passage of the ACA, Obamacare. And this is a measure that will produce revenue that will preserve the Oregon Health Plan for over a million Oregonians, including almost 400,000 children. So, do you want me to read the resolution, or do you want to say something else?
Just, we did not consider, we're not forwarding a recommendation on this resolution. We'll just consider it all for the Board as a whole, but we did discuss, as the Legislative Committee, that we're going to create a policy to forward to the full Board around the process of endorsements on political measures.
Should I read it?
I think we've got it in our board book. It's probably not necessary.
So, it's been posted, so everybody can read it.
Maybe you should read the final resolution so that it's out of the warehouses or the recitals.
Okay, resolution number 5557. The Board of Education of Portland Public Schools urges a yes vote on ballot measure 101.
Thank you. The Board will now consider resolution 5557, supportive of measure 101, the Medicaid funding package. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Director Sparza Brown moves, and Director Konstantin seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5557. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on resolution 5557?
No.
Any Board discussion?
I just think it's important to note with this measure that this is a tax on the healthcare providers, and it is almost universally supported by the healthcare providers in this community who know that not only is there a moral imperative to cover these children and families, but if we didn't do it in this responsible way through our state health plan, they'd show up in the emergency rooms anyway. Their issues are not going to go away, so it's a necessary fix.
Good for kids, good for families, better, cheaper healthcare.
And children who are not healthy cannot learn. We are plagued with chronic absenteeism in this state. It's far above the national average. We need to fix that. Children are not in school because they're sick. They aren't in school because they're in pain. This is going to go to address it.
And if this measure does not pass, this is going to require a really difficult choice by legislators. There's going to be a huge budget shortfall that needs to be filled, and they are either going to have to cut back on OHP, or they're going to have to reallocate money in this year's budget that has already been allocated in order to cover the shortfall. K-12 public education funding accounts for about 39% of the state budget. If there is a budget shortfall, it's highly likely that the K-12 budget will be affected. So, we have a vested interest in passing this measure, not only to maintain the health of our children and families, but also to maintain the fiscal health of this school district.
There's no other comments? The Board will now vote on resolution 5557. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Rep. Tran?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5557 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Tran voting yes. Now, we're going to move on to financial accountability. Tonight, we have consideration of a corrective action plan. This item was heard by the Board's Finance Audit and Operations Committee, and I'd like to ask that committee's chair to introduce the item.
This is a resolution that is in response to the findings of the annual financial audit that was completed in December. This is going to be accompanied by a letter to the Secretary of State stipulating the measures that have been taken in response to the findings. And the resolution consists essentially of a summary of the kinds of actions that PPS is going to be taking to ensure that the issues that emerged during the audit will not reappear in future. And that these are, I think, relatively minor changes in some of the internal auditing processes. And if there's any discussion, I think Mei Li, the Chief Financial Officer, is available to answer any questions. We covered this pretty thoroughly at the Finance Audit and Operations Committee meeting.
All right. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, we're now going to consider the resolution. I'm going to ask for a motion, and then if people have any questions, we can go there. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Rosen moves, and Director Anthony seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5558. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on resolution 5558? Is it any Board discussion, or this would now be the time if there's any questions for our Chief Financial Officer?
Just to comment that from our conversation in our committee meeting, they're really clear from our Chief Financial Officer, Mei Li, that the sufficient responses have been put in place, that protocols have been changed, and that it's not just a recognition that there needs to be a response to those, but that controls have already been put in place. So, thank you very much.
Of course.
Great.
Any other comment?
I should probably say that the committee unanimously recommended approval of this resolution.
Which is a majority of this Board, so... Okay. Any other comments or questions? The Board will now vote on resolution 5558. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Rep. Tran?
Yes.
Any abstentions? Resolution 5558 is approved by a seven to zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting yes. Now, we're going to have a Board leadership vote. Per Board policy, leadership roles are voted on twice annually. At this time, I'll ask for nominations for Chair and Vice Chair. Representative Bailey, or Director Bailey?
So, I would propose that we continue with our current leadership structure, Julia Bramm-Adwards as our Chair, and Julius Sparza-Brown and Rita Moore as our co-Vice Chairs.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So moved.
And seconded by Director Rosen. We have resolution 5559. Is there any Board discussion? Okay, the Board will now vote on resolution 5559. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
So, resolution number 5559 is approved by a six to one vote with Student Representative Tran voting yes. And I'd just like to thank the co-chairs. I think we've, it's been a little bit of an experiment with a distributive leadership model, and I think you both have brought your perspectives and expertise and wisdom to the job, and I think it's made for a stronger leadership team. So, next item on our agenda is an Oregon School Boards Association election vote. On November 14th, 2017, the Board cast its vote for Oregon School Board Legislative Policy Committee, position number 19. Districts across Oregon voted, and a tie was declared for position number 19. The Board will provide a voice vote for position... The board will provide a voice vote for position 19 on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee. Do I have a motion to vote for our own Vice Chair, Rita Moore, or John Hartstock from Gresham Barlow? Do I have a motion?
I move that we vote for Rita Moore.
I second that.
It's been, Rita Moore's name has been advanced, and it's been seconded by Director Anthony. It's been seconded by Director Sparza-Brown. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The motion passes by a seven to zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting yes to advance Rita Moore back into the ring. I'm going to skip over--
Excuse me, Julia or Paul, do you know how many districts there are in that region that will be voting on this?
I think it's six, which may be why we're coming up with a tie.
Thanks. It's six. I'm not sure.
So we're going to move over for a moment across, over the appeals to the board. We'll come back to that. We have the remainder of the business agenda. We have it before us tonight, so the board will now consider those items. We've already voted on resolutions 5557 through 5560. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull for a separate discussion and vote? Ms. Houston--
You've not yet voted on--
Oh, I'm sorry. Correction, thank you. We've already voted on resolutions 5557 through 5559. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Director Moore and seconded by Director Rosen for the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
There is none.
Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
I think we need to, I think we need to take out resolution 5560, which is the appeal.
Oh, we--
Did you take that out of the--
Well, we've, okay, let's see.
I think we have to take it out of the business agenda.
Ms. Large?
It should not be in the business agenda. It's not clear from my records, actually.
Right, because we should have voted on it as a separate--
It should be, it's a separate matter, so--
Because we were going to--
Okay, never mind.
Because we were going to have a separate vote on that. Okay. So I think I had already asked for the ayes. Is there anyone opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The business agenda is adopted by a seven to zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting yes. And now I'm going to just go back and see, we have a level three complaint, and we want to see if the complaint, so we had some people who were going to testify. Are they here yet? Ms. Powell?
Ms. Castrina, she's on the line.
Pardon?
Do you want to call for Ms. Castrina and see if she's here?
Ms. Houston, do you want to call the-- For our record, we had two people wanting to provide public comment for the step three complaint, and that's Frank and Mia Castrina. I don't think they're here. So they were set for a time certain later on the agenda, so we'll go ahead and leave it, put it back on the order, so that they can provide an opportunity to have public So we, now we're going to go back to the regular order of business, which was starting with the superintendent's report, then public comment, and the PAT president. But at this point, I am going to, I apologize, I have to leave the meeting. I'm going to have Vice Chair Moore run the meeting, and I will call in and listen to all the public comment and participate in the vote on the complaint. So, my apologies.
Okay, so we're going to restart with student and public comments, and before we begin the public comment period--
Superintendent's Report.
Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your report?
I'd love to. Good evening, directors. Given it is our first meeting of 2018, I want to start by wishing everyone a Happy New Year. I also want to extend the congratulations to the Marysville School Community for its commendable work. And speaking of recognitions, I do want to recognize that January is School Board Recognition Month. So thank you, directors, for your service and your commitment to the students and families of Portland. And speaking of central leadership capacity, we continue to actively work towards identifying, and I'm very pleased to know that there are highly qualified candidates who continue to express an interest to join our work here in PPS. And you probably caught the announcement. Very pleased to share our latest addition in hiring Stephanie Soden as our new Chief of Staff. I don't think she's here this evening. Stephanie brings a wealth of relevant experience. She's been Chief of Staff and Policy Advisor to Metro President Tom Hughes for the last eight years, before that, serving in the Department of Justice and the Governor's Office and with other elected officials. She is a PPS parent. In addition to helping to coordinate various district initiatives, she'll be leading a staff team that includes communications, government relations, strategic partnerships, while supporting the office of the superintendent. And the best part is, she starts officially tomorrow. So some middle school updates. This evening, we will be receiving an update from our Chief Operations Officer regarding our progress and actions and next steps being taken regarding some of the environmental health and air quality concerns at Harriet Tubman Middle School. So we'll be hearing more details this evening from Mr. Jerry Vincent. Obviously, we're very curious about the results of the testing, giving us the data that we need to learn about to design any specific mitigation that might be required at that school site. This morning, we reconvened our senior district department leaders involved with the opening of these two specific comprehensive middle schools as a status check. There really are a lot of moving parts, but we are committed to ensuring a smooth and positive transition for students, staff, and families. School visits. I continue to spend time visiting schools since returning from winter break. I've had the opportunity to visit Jackson Middle School, Whitman Elementary, Vernon K-8, Franklin, and Alliance High Schools. Thank you, principals and school teams, for sharing your practices. I continue to be inspired by my talks with students, teachers, and leaders, and the work they do on a daily basis. We do have Martin Luther King School Holiday coming up this coming Monday. It is a school holiday, but it will be a busy day. In addition to any potential continued bargaining sessions with PAT, I will be attending the annual scanner breakfast, as well as the annual Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Tribute at the Highland Center in northeast Portland, where I've been asked to share a few words. The tribute that day will include and feature performances by Bravo Music from Rosa Parks School and the Jefferson Dancers, another opportunity to highlight our students. And I also want to recognize that at this event, our PPS Athletics Director, Mr. Marshall Haskins, he's going to be recognized and will be receiving a well-deserved Lifetime Achievement Award at this event on Monday. Congratulations, Marshall. This week, Thursday, we have an all principals leadership team meeting. This will be an opportunity for me to, for me and the staff to share a mid-year update. Look forward to sharing some reflections to date and some of our work on deck for the coming semester. I also do want to say a few words about our bargaining progress. We continue to work closely and in earnest with PAT leadership to try to resolve and settle on a contract. And aside from, you know, ongoing conversations, our next steps include being back at the table this Thursday and Friday. We've set aside the weekend, if necessary, with the goal of arriving at an agreement. I'm cautiously optimistic that we're getting close in a way that honors our teachers and is realistic, given our financial constraints. But for those of us that have been involved in these negotiations directly, we do realize there are many areas of shared interest. One of these areas is to work towards ensuring that we have a systemic ability to support our students who require more intensive support, and to better ensure their readiness to learn. Effectively meeting the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students is a topic that school systems everywhere are challenged with, better understanding, and having solutions and strategies to address those. In fact, I had the opportunity this afternoon to join a small group of superintendents in meeting with Governor Brown in Salem today to speak on this specific topic. A couple of school highlights. Marysville, it is on pace to save $22,000 this year on energy costs, showing it's been recognized as a showcase project with the U.S. Department of Energy's Better Buildings Challenge. So this K-8 is one of 13 campuses that's undergone a bit of work on its energy practices and equipment as part of a government program, and that's paying off. And also, Grant High School. Once again, Grant Magazine has been nominated for a National Gold Crown Award by the Columbia Scholastic Press Association. If they win, it will mark an incredible fifth year in a row that Grant Magazine has won this prestigious prize. The 22 journalism students and their teacher who have worked very hard to produce this magazine would be traveling to New York in March to participate in the national conference, being paid for through subscriptions, fundraising, and donations. Congratulations to both of these schools, students, teachers, and staff principals for making it happen. And finally, I want to call your attention to connect to kindergarten. There's a brochure out there which many of you might have already received. Our board has it at the dais here. These events begin later this month and continue through February and March around the district, site by site. We look forward to welcoming new students and families to the Portland Public Schools. Thank you, directors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Okay, so now we turn to student and public comment.
I'm going to dial, it's kind of loud.
While she's dialing, I'll read the guidelines. "The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen with our electronic devices turned off. One quick reminder, any oversized signs need to be in the back foyer." I don't see any. "Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation." Ms. Houston, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do. We have a total of seven, and our first two speakers are Ron Popkin and Julia Degraw.
I am a former chairman of the Alternative School, McCoy Academy, which is part of Oregon Outreach, Inc. Oregon Outreach has contracts with three other school districts, and McCoy is purely fundraising and contributions. The concern that I feel has, feel that has not been addressed, we have, for many years, we've existed for 30 years, we are accredited by the same agency that accredited PPS. However, we get almost zero support for the 15 PPS eligible students that we educated last year, and all of the past many, many years. I've made testimony here before, as have others, and it almost seems that these are throwaway kids. They are eligible for PPS support. They have not been, other than a little bit of Title I money. The school has come close to closing on several occasions because that's the nature of small nonprofits. So what could possibly happen here to help these children? Let me go back one step. Portland community has recognized the work we do because we're now in partnership with them in northeast Portland. They provide classroom space for us and also a professor free of charge because some of these students are taking college-type courses. So they recognize the work we're doing, they recognize the need of the students, but we have been unsuccessful for the last three or four years in getting PPS to really support these kids. Where do the kids come from? They're dropouts from PPS regular schools, and they're also dropouts from other alternative schools. We do not advertise. Why are they with us? Because friends and family say, "That's the place you can get educated, you have the needs that you have to obtain an education." So I think the best thing that could happen is someone either volunteer from the board or be appointed from the board to sit down, detail with our head lady, Becky Black, see what we do. We do have a website, you can do some exploring, and see if there's any way that these students-- Last year, we had the 15, we had a waiting list of 15, and as we all know, once there's a waiting list, people stop signing up. There's a great need out there, the PPS is not addressing this particular group. If I have any time left, the doorbell ringing program, we did, one of the board members took an interest. Becky Black was able to meet with someone here from the system. She was told, "We don't have money to help you because we hired bellringers." And here, we have ready-made kids ready to go forward. Thank you.
All right, for the record-- For the record, my name is Julia Degraw, last name D-E-G-R-A-W. I live in the southeast Portland neighborhood of Montevilla, and I'm running for Portland City Council, position two. It's currently held by Nick Fish. When I initially attended a Portland Public School Board meeting with the intent to give public testimony regarding my concern about the Portland teachers going so long without a contract, I was turned away. It was at the next month's meeting that I was informed that you would need to sign up weeks in advance to speak at some future meeting, that the date was uncertain. The whole process struck me as undemocratic and shuts public voices out of timely issues that the PPS Board covers at its monthly meetings. I urge the board to consider opening up the public comment period and making the process published and transparent, so more members of the public can testify on the important timely issues being covered. Most democratic institutions have this form of public input. As I mentioned, my initial interest for testifying was my concern that Portland teachers have been so long without a contract. And one of the issues, and regardless of what the issues are surrounding the contract negotiations, it's unacceptable that it's gone so long, and I'm really glad to hear that it looks like there's progress being made there, and I hope that a fair contract is imminent. I attended public schools, K through 12, growing up here in the Portland metro area, and I was lucky to have teachers who helped me believe in myself and my own potential. I can honestly say that I'm the person I am today because of the support I got at key moments in my youth from special teachers who believed in me. It was because of a high school teacher that I went on to become an environmental and social justice organizer. He made me realize that I can make a living following my dreams to make the world a better place. And I realize that sounds idealistic, but it's the truth. I know that Portland teachers strive to be life changers like my high school science teacher in their students' lives. How can they be expected to do this if they can't even count on something as stabilizing as a fair contract? Portland teachers are not asked, are not asking for too much, and I urge you to work with them to come up with a fair contract that ensures teacher salaries and benefits are competitive to help us recruit and retain high-quality teachers, that reduces class sizes, and offers greater support for special education needs and access to services. Which leads me to my final point. I signed on to the letter from teachers urging Mary Pearson to protect the Pioneer Program. Pitting one quality program against another is not acceptable, is not acceptable, and to split Pioneer Services into two campuses according to your own teachers who are experts in this area would be more detrimental to Pioneer students than splitting the campus for the-- detrimental to Pioneer students than splitting the campus for the access students. Both programs ultimately need their own building, making it clear there's no immediate, perfect solution to this problem. However, solving it at the expense of the most vulnerable and underrepresented students in the PPS system seems short-sighted and wrong. I urge you to reconsider the decision to split up the... I urge you to reconsider the decision to split up the Pioneer Program, and thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Laramie Babbitt, B-B-B-I-T-T. Good evening. At PPS, we create environments of safety, respect, and responsibility. The move of Pioneer represents none of these ideals. This decision is not safe. The facilities at Rice and Applegate are not suitable to meet our students' needs. Youngston and Holiday have features that Rice and Applegate cannot replicate. The numerous areas for students to de-escalate with dignity and privacy will be stripped from them. Currently, we have multiple sensory spaces, various calm-down areas, and safe places outdoors that are utilized throughout the day. Rice and Applegate do not have these spaces, thus triggering students, leading to more unsafe incidents and a need to use the de-escalation room. This lack of space will decrease the staff's ability, no matter how skilled, to de-escalate the situation in a therapeutic way. There's no upper or lower campus in this plan. We will be at two completely different sites. There's a breezeway between our buildings, but that's not a barrier. We move fluidly to support each other in order to keep staff and students safe. This move limits the continuum of caring, supportive, and consistent adults in our students' lives and reduces our staff's ability to create a healthy environment. This decision is not responsible. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have gone into making the current Pioneer Building fit our students' needs. You've talked about putting money into gen ed schools to increase training and staffing, and the responsible choice would be to start there and not uproot us from a building that works for our population. It is irresponsible and wrong to push our most vulnerable students into buildings that cannot and will never meet their needs. This decision and the entire process has been disrespectful and inequitable to our students, parents, and staff. No one from our Pioneer community was consulted about this change, and yet, our Superintendent speaks of equity. Our building is vital to our kids' success. To deny our most vulnerable students access to a building that is customized to fit their needs and ensures the safety of both students and staff to buildings that do not have cafeterias, playgrounds, libraries, or gyms, ultimately, a more restrictive environment is at the very least unethical. These sites fail to provide the fundamental areas necessary for our students to practice the skills they need in order to move to a less restrictive environment. It is inequitable, disrespectful, irresponsible, and unsafe to push us from our building to more restrictive, less inclusive buildings. Also, these sites are not near bus lines. Rice is 3/4 of a mile from the nearest bus stop. This is inequitable to our parents and students. And to say Applegate would be K-5 is a lie. Truthfully, we would be K-8 because the middle school life skills class would be housed at Applegate, giving those students no opportunity to be with same-aged peers. This would be untherapeutic and more restrictive. As a community, we urge you to rethink this decision, to move forward in a responsible, equitable, and caring manner by leaving Pioneer intact and at our current site. And I have two questions for our Superintendent. We've asked you, how much will this cost? And yet, we have yet to receive an answer. We've been told there will be continuing conversations, but money has been spent and an administrative position has been posted. Where's the communication and transparency? Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of Kelly Rundle. I'm Gavin Riedel, R-I-E-D-E-L. I'm the PE teacher at Pioneer for all of the K-12 students. The Applegate campus is completely lacking a gym and only contains a 1,500-square-foot multipurpose room. Rice, as well, only contains a 2,500-square-foot multipurpose room. That is not a gym. The average regulation basketball court is 4,200 square feet. Here at Pioneer, we are lacking a gym, and we are making do with our cafeteria that is 3,000 square feet. How am I supposed to give these students an adequate physical education in a 1,500-square-foot room? We literally have a classroom in our building that is larger than that. With the House Bill 3141 that was passed in 2007, it states that K-5 students are required 150 minutes a week of an adequate physical education, and 5-12 grade students, 225. This little space provided at the new campus will simply not allow for me to teach an adequate physical education and to teach many of the students the skills that their peers will be getting at other buildings and which I am currently able to teach here at Pioneer. And meeting the time requirements will be physically impossible with me now split between two buildings on two opposite sides of town. Not to mention, we barely have enough equipment for our Pioneer Program now, but split two ways between two separate buildings, our kids will barely have anything, and I will be forced to haul equipment around town between two locations so the students can try to scrape by for some PE time in their new multipurpose room. The gym condition is also completely unsafe for our students and staff. Our gym can get extremely chaotic due to being very large and very large numbers of students, and we want to give them all a chance to run around. And we work extremely hard as staff to make sure the safety of our students is there in this atmosphere. But if you cut our gym size in half for a rainy day recess, there will either be student or staff injuries every single day, or kids will be forced to sit in their classrooms for recess, which is simply not okay. Even on non-rainy days, our kids will not have anything to do at the Applegate campus anyway with there being a lack of a playground. Not only is the lack of physical activity unjust and unfair for our student population, but it will hinder their learning as well. It has been proven in countless studies that students need brain breaks to be active throughout the day for most effective learning, including one by the CDC that states kids need moderate physical activity for 60 minutes a day, such as running, jumping, or brisk walking. We are able to make that happen in the Pioneer Building here with the use of a playground, an adequate-sized gym, fenced in yards on all sides, and being in a safe neighborhood. That is simply not possible with our Applegate or Rice campuses. Students are already dealt an unfair hand here when it comes to trying to keep up with their peers, with their same-aged peers. This is going to make the poor poorer and the rich richer, and completely just blows my mind just how unjust you are being to these poor students. I challenge you, Mr. Guerrero, to come to a rainy day recess at Pioneer, which you have already stated that you are planning on. However, we are still waiting. I know my time's almost up, so I have just a quick closing comment. Mr. Guerrero has claimed that the Board actually mandated that Applegate or that access stay under one roof. So what makes it so you guys can't mandate that we stay under one roof? Part of their reasoning, I know, is because they have third-grade students that read at eighth-grade math levels. However, we have eighth-grade students that read at third-grade levels. Ms. Laramie, I know, has student teachers that come in her room that are eighth graders that are scared to read in front of their same-aged peers, but they are looked at as gods by the kids when they go and read at like a kindergarten reading circle. It's like some of the only time that they get to boost their self-esteem is by being with other-aged peers. So, we need to stay together as a cohesive community.
Hello, friends. My name is Mia Pisano, P-I-S-A-N-O, and I'm here on behalf of the many people who have spoken to the need to retire the name of the Quaker religious faith from use by Franklin High School. It is a great time for Portland Public Schools to build thoughtful, progressive, comprehensive guidelines and procedures around naming and renaming in our schools because names matter. Think about it. Think about the meaning and the power of the names we use for ourselves and for each other and against each other. Think about the power of the names we use to bring us closer together and to keep us apart and to keep others away. Think about the significance of the names we use for those we love, those we hate, and those we fear. Think about the power of the names we use to demean, diminish, and disempower. Think about the strength of the names we use to respect, dignify, and honor. Think about everything that we convey when we use these names. Who has the right to take a name from you? Who has the right to call you by a name you do not choose or accept? Who has the right to take the name of another's faith and use it as they fancy? Think about everything that we teach our children through the names that we use. I know that I speak for many when we say we will work with you to move forward the way that we use names in our schools. Thank you.
My name is Jeff McNeil, last name spelled M-C-N-E-A-L. I'm a teacher at Applegate Head Start, and I've come here tonight to speak out against the Superintendent's unilateral decision to relocate the Access Academy, Pioneer Program, and Applegate Head Start. Antonio Lopez came to Applegate to tell us about this decision. While he was explaining the reasons as to why the decision was made to move Pioneer to Applegate, he stated that many of the staff at Pioneer requested the move, that the staff at Pioneer thought their building was unsafe and not suited for the type of behavior they experience on a daily basis, and that the Applegate site is such a more equipped building to handle the kinds of extreme behavior than the kids at the current site. I have no clue where he received this information, and because every staff member I've communicated with from Pioneer has told me the exact opposite. Applegate is a wonderful site, but it is unsafe for the students from Pioneer. We have windows that we can't open during rainy times because we fear the frames will crumble because they have so much dry rot. We have absolutely no fence that surrounds the school, making it unsafe for students who are prone to running away from teachers. We don't have a functioning kitchen. We don't have a functioning library. We don't have a functioning cafeteria. How much money would it cost to upgrade Applegate to make it suitable for the students from Pioneer? Also, there's only one staff bathroom. Currently at Applegate, we teach 77 students from low-income families. 100% of our students at Applegate qualify for free and reduced lunch. You've said at Pioneer that you are dedicated to prioritizing our most at-risk students. We are your most at-risk students. We represent a community of people who have been failed by our public school system, and we had to prove to the community that with our actions and our compassion, not just our words, because you have demonstrated, Superintendent, that words are easily rescinded, that we will not fail their children. The staff and family at Applegate have been told that there are other pre-K opportunities in the area, and many are just two or three miles away, that the district would make sure that their child was guaranteed a place in one. I have taught many students at my time at Applegate whose families don't have access to a car. I am currently teaching students who are homeless. I want you to think about walking yourself and your three-year-old son or daughter to school at 8:00 a.m. in January, in the cold, when it's pouring down rain, and still tell me these other sites are an option. I'm also frustrated that I never hear anyone talking about the two NEA, Native American Youth, classrooms that are housed at Applegate. One is part of PPS Head Start, and the other is currently residing in a portable just outside of Applegate. There are currently nine early childhood Head Start students in that portable with ages ranging from six months to three years old, and I feel like that information was not shared intentionally to make your decision seem like it wasn't affecting as many people as it really is. There's been a history of distrust between the teachers and the school district, and when I heard that we were getting a new Superintendent, I was hopeful that we could finally start repairing that. But your actions in the first few months have shown me just the opposite. This is a poor decision for many reasons. Applegate is not a fit site for Pioneer. The community around Applegate has a history of being pushed around, dislocated, and underserved, and this decision was made without the input of those affected the most. These are only some of the reasons why I'm urging you to change your mind, and if you're not willing to actually listen to the individuals who need your attention, then I invite you into my classroom so you can tell my students and their families about your decisions so you have to look at the faces of the ones that you are affecting.
Mi nombre es Jim Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A. Quisiera dar la bienvenida al señor Guerrero. Con todo respeto, su éxito será el éxito de nuestros estudiantes. As someone who cares deeply about student success, I'd like to share my vision of equity and excellence for Portland Public Schools' middle school students. When the next middle school is opened, I'm expecting that you hire a principal with middle school teaching and leadership experience... A principal who sets a tone where student safety is a given, staff is supported and respected as professionals, parents are assured their children are safe, learning, and happy. For students who misbehave, a healthy school system has a venue through which teachers can collaborate with colleagues in an attempt to provide additional or alternative methods of support for struggling students. Schools with a strengths-based approach are places where misbehaving students are not only held accountable but are taught what they should be doing differently. I want to see a school where the color of your skin does not determine that your behavior must mean you belong in special ed versus inquiry as to whether or not you've been referred to tag and might be bored in class. I want our middle schools, who serve dual immersion, especially in Spanish, to have critical mass of students. That means there's enough kids so that the middle school has resources to provide robust middle school dual-language experiences. For us to continue to add Spanish dual-immersion sites to the district is simply sabotaging our own efforts to hire excellent, highly qualified, multiply endorsed bilingual teachers. We are sending 44 students to Roseway Heights. There will be no program for 44 students. We cannot continue to add Spanish dual-immersion middle school sites with under 150 students. We need to use the gauge that we use for Mandarin and Japanese programs. There is an equation that the dual-immersion department created to ensure there's enough students going to middle school so that there is dual language. Let's apply that same criteria to Spanish. Considering past practice with Portland Public Schools' middle school program development, I'm going to be honest, I am pessimistic about my district's will and/or skill in ensuring racial and socioeconomic equity in our middle schools. In anticipation of Harriet Tubman, a school slated to serve a large population of diverse students, I can't help but ask, what is going on at Oakley Green? The climate is described in their December Site Council minutes. The safety issues are numerous. You can find more detail in a complaint that I will be filing formally, but until then, I beg you, please go visit unannounced to Oakley Green. Walk through those hallways, sit with those teachers, and ask them if they feel supported. Listen to the parents who are begging for structure, order, safety, and instruction. They began last year with a principal who had no experience in middle school and was removed mid-year. They now have an interim principal, they have five administrators, and not a single parent can get their phone calls answered. I beg you to communicate with the Site Council of Oakley Green and let them know what's happening with the principal hire. They were told January, they still don't know what is happening. So I beg you to please go visit Oakley Green, and I ask you to consider, we will not tolerate this at Harriet Tubman. I will do whatever I can to prevent replicating the institutional racism I see at Oakley Green. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all again for presenting your views to the Board. We take your testimony seriously. The next item on the agenda is going to be the 2017 Capital Bond Health and Safety. Tonight, the Board will receive its quarterly update on the 2017 Bond Environmental Health, Safety, and Accessibility. The Board's Health, Safety, and Accessibility Committee has been working closely with the facilities and bond staff. Chair Rosen, would you like to introduce this item, and Jerry Vincent, Chief Operating Officer, to provide the update?
Thank you, Chair Moore. The Health and Safety and Accessibility Committee has been meeting for several months now and essentially has been working... now and essentially has been working with facilities to keep track of all bond-specified health issues such as ADA compliance, asbestos abatement, lead in drinking water, and paint abatement, and many other health issues. So I see Jerry's up at the podium, and he's our Chief Operating Officer, and he'll give us an overview of what's happening tonight. Thanks, Jerry.
Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to cover two things. I can give an update on our Tubman Environment Health and Safety right after our quarterly report here. So we continue to roll out the next steps of our comprehensive health and safety and accessibility work, as it was stated in the resolution of our bond language. As you may recall, just because it was a May bond, which is unusual from November, we put immediate work into play, which was to take advantage of the summer and the fall. We're switching to our intermediate work right now, and we're also coming up with prioritizations, protocols, procedures that start the third phase, which is future, so we can have our outreach and get some input in a lot of these areas. So if we can start to go through presentation, we will... I always like to start with this one, just remind everyone what the categories were for the health and safety part. It's 150 million plus 8 million from a state grant that we got with matching funds with passing the bond. I'll walk right through these in order. The water, the water quality, and our whole removing lead in the water is our top priority that we started first, so it has the most detail in the rollout, so I'll cover that and we'll go down through the rest. This is just some of the completion things that we've done so far. As you may recall, we have seven rounds of schools, seven groups of schools, there's 15 in each, I should say seven groups of facilities, six groups of schools. Seventh one is the administration of other type facilities that we've stayed till last. So we took the first 15, since this has never been done before, and put them in a pilot project. Want to talk about some of our lessons learned from the pilot now that we are done with that. And our Group Two projects were job walk in December, bid awarded, and they'll be starting, I believe, next week, and then in January, later this month, we'll have our three, Group Three bids that will do job walks, and so we're moving right on through these six categories, or the six groups of projects. So here's sort of the forecast, and just covered some of it. Group Three is what we're working on next. Those 15 schools will be walked by the contractors, bid awarded. You switch into February, Group Four will start to be job walk and awarded. March is Group Five, April Group Six. This is all pending on enough contractors to walk the projects, bid the work, and then we are targeting to be done in June, and that would be with the first phase of this work. We'd like it to be done in total, I'm going to talk about that. What happens if the fixtures after being replaced and tested are still high? And we'll talk about that in a moment. So this is our path forward all the way up until this summer. Originally, this was pre-bond, looking at the three-year window. Right now, like I said, we are working on our Group Two. We're going to try to get this done in about 12 to 14 months. Every month that we can save, our operational costs of all of our bottled water that we have, that's directly coming out of a general fund that we didn't plan for in year one, but planned for this year, but we'd like to return those monies to the general fund. This is a tough one from there to see what you have in front of you. Just saying that we met these, we met these goals. We went to the first 15 schools. We said that we'd have them done by these dates, sampled by these dates, tested, results back. All this is on our website. All 15 schools are back up. The asterisk for these couple, they have some fountains that after they, our protocol is that they don't come back up after our testing, and they're still high. We try our flush protocol again, see if they come back within numbers that are acceptable range. If not a second time, we cap those. We don't bring them online, but we get the rest of the facility up as much as possible for the drinking fixtures for the bottled water. I'll show you what we do with the ones, and we've only just now had a few that don't come back after two rounds of testing. I'll take you through our infographic and show you what we do with those. And so here it is, right here. We've talked about this before. All the drinking fixtures, not every faucet, sinks, bathrooms, whatever, all the drinking fixtures is where our bottled water cost is coming from, we replace. If they get replaced and they test, they test below the acceptable levels, then we come right in and they're turned back on. If not, they go over and we look into the walls, we start seeing cameras, we start figuring out why. Is it in the pipe, partial pipe replacement in the wall? If we find that, replace it and test again, and the water is acceptable, we come online. If not, we start going to partial pipe replacement of the trenches, because now it's not in the walls anymore. We take it all the way out to the street, and then after that, and we test it and it doesn't come back online, we literally have to go out to the backflow preventer, change all that out at the street level, test again. If not, it's not us, it's the city. So that's our commitment and how we take it from the faucet all the way out to the road. I am happy to say that the 15 of them are done. Everything has largely been in this right here. We have three fountains. The fountains, if we team with the principal that they are not, there are others in the area. It's not like if this one's taken out, we have to walk this distance. Then we take that one out until Phase Two, which is we address drinking fountains in the classrooms, along with the sinks in the classrooms, and I'll discuss that in a moment. So we've done, this is on our website, we've sent these to the sites, we've handed these out for anybody who would like to know. We've put them in our email blast. This is kind of the overview picture for folks who like to follow the infographic. There's a lot more detail in a second on the backside of this flyer right here. So lessons learned. We started the 15, tried to get in touch with principals. Some of this was like at night, shut the water down, get going. It was clunky, and so, and the principals have been great to work with. So we notified of what we were doing, said we're figuring this out as part of a pilot. They worked with this, and as we were wrapping things up, we said, what are some of the feedback you're getting? They said, well, we don't like our Head Start programs and our K2s, we don't like them leaving the room to go get a drink, because a lot of the fountains that are also non-ADA compliant that are in the classrooms, that's part of our sink replacement ADA compliant, in which we'll put a drinking fountain bubbler on that sink. We get a kind of a two-for-one. We have a sink that's ADA compliant and an ADA compliant bubbler. Instead of right now, we have a sink and/or in some schools, a separate drinking fountain, and neither one is ADA compliant. So that's in the next round of the work we're doing. We're again turning the drinking fixtures back on and for bottle refills. So the feedback was our K2, we'd like them not to leave the room, we like our Head Start not to leave our room. Any of our special education programs and classes, we'd like them not to leave the room. So what we're doing, we run into this, we're leaving some bottled water behind for these as we've turned the others on, and we'll be doing that throughout the program until we get everything up and running that is a drinking fixture, including the sinks and the in-classroom drinking fountains. So it's reducing a lot of the operational costs for bottled water, but it's not taking it all the way, you know, all the way down entirely yet. So our pilot project, we didn't communicate as well. As you can imagine, a lot of this work is nights and weekends, and we hope you're back up and it's ready to go when you come in next morning. But we've got some checklists, we have some protocols, the principals, we have a big thank you to them, they're very helpful. And now in our second round, we meet with the principals, we're more proactive, we have a toolkit. We come in, we tell them what we're going to do, we tell them about the K2 or the Head Start. We now have signs that we show them that we put up if it's a non-drinking fixture, if it's a drinking fixture, and we have more of a toolkit that we can hand out in Group Two. Group Three, we'll even do lessons learned from Group Two, and we'll get better at this as we go. And it's the communicating of the plan, and then communicating it to the Board of Ed and to the community. The principals of the second group, we've met with 11 of the 15 principals, it happened kind of over the winter break, and so we're picking up on the other four that we'll meet with this week. And just want to show that, so the first round, we have that completed, and this is where we're looking at for the Group Two and the Group Three that were shown earlier. These are the expected deadlines for the work, and again, this is the turning of the fixtures on. If it turns out it's something in the wall, we roll to the next phase of that infographic. And there's Groups Four and Groups Five, and then Six, and then Seven is some of our other facilities, and we plan on doing that too. The bond measure says 28 million, 90 sites do them all. So just lastly, our water quality, as we leave the water, I just wanted to let the Board of Ed know that our Risk Director, Joe Crelier, and Director of Government Relations, Courtney Westling, they participate in stakeholder and advisory groups, you know, for Senate Bill 1062, which is the Healthy and Safe Schools. That's setting a lot of the protocol for how the entire state is going to do testing of water in the future. They're actually very interested in a lot of our input, because you can imagine, we're the ones going through this right now, and we have a lot of the protocol and the detail. And so the group's working with Oregon Health Authority and developing rules, our frequency, how often and test. We're just saying that we're staying in that room and in those conversations. The next thing that's in our bond is our fire alarms. So we've talked about this before, we had many fire alarm systems that were failing years ago, two, three years ago. We entered into an agreement with the city that we were going to replace them. We started some of these pre-bond measure, we're continuing forward. We're getting into what Group Two is now, those are the fire alarms that are not functioning. The urgency here is that a lot of the sites, they weren't fully addressable. If you pull it in one area, you might hear it in most areas, but not all. And then the equipment and the panels weren't even in operation anymore. So it works now, but they don't make these parts anymore. So that's how we started into this, having this as a high priority in the bond. Fire alarms are all set up with their grouping and phasing right there. We're coming right on down through Group One and getting ready to progress into the Group Twos. Sprinklers, we've talked about this. A lot of our sites either were not fully sprinkled, weren't sprinkled at all, they were sprinkled, but they weren't working correctly. So a lot of the same contractors do this kind of work. So in our future plan, we go out and we couple fire sprinkler and fire alarms in the same package. We get better bids, better economies of scale, more schools in the same bid for two items. It just keeps getting better on our savings. And these are being drawn up right now in our interim phase, immediate phase, no interim phase. We are taking most of the schools that were in our IP17 that did not go forward, and architects are already on board, have already drawn some of these things. We've added the 2017 bond scope. They're already doing like an elevator, a roof, what have you, things that are in this bond measure. Again, May threw that off on how you get an architect on board, drawing city permit, and hit this spring bid window so we can start something next summer. So that's the ones that are in our intermediate, and we'll talk about our future work and how we're getting ready for stakeholder input on all of our future work. And then here's the schools right here that we walked through so far, and these are, we've already have through our Maintenance and Operations Department, rankings on the ones that are in our worst condition or zero, they don't have any at all. And just no review on asbestos and all the different recorded incidents and applications that we have throughout the district. We've done a lot of small-scale asbestos work since the bond passed. Things like asbestos, some security-type cameras, radon, lead paint, these things that we will be doing these things in small project, large project for future. You know, it's imperative that we keep this work going, even though you get economies of scale when you put it together, we'd like not to be able to say, we note that you have asbestos, and we'll be out in 2023 to do something about that. And so we can keep the small-scale projects going, and then we have large scale, and those are the ones that we're kind of looking at right now. What requires scaffolding, high lift? So we're trying to break them out and prioritize them, and then break them out into small and large. Here's what we completed, and here's what we're wrapping up right now, and then our large significant projects, we're already identifying here and getting those drawn and prepared for next summer. Lead paint, done a lot of what we just said through our summer work, and then our interiors. We've fully painted out two schools, and we're on our third one right now. And then just want to note again that Healthy and Safe Schools rule, that our rule calls for the stakeholder input. Here is Joe and his information, our Risk Manager. We have a website right up above up there that has everything that we have regarding lead paint. It's very comprehensive. It's run on this link on our website right here, by site, by incident. And roofs, so we've prioritized some roofs. This is some of the work that has left to be done. It's hard, because you go Priority One on roofs, and so many are deteriorated. How do you do Priority One and Priority Point 7.5 and Priority Point 5? That's the way we're looking at right now. So we're taking a hard look at them. I can tell you that most of the roofs in the district are past their life expectancy, and they're in rough shape. These folks will tell you. They have buckets all over their classrooms, I'm sure. ADA accessibility, we've completed our draft of the ADA Transition Plan. We have priorities on it. We have it set up, we're going to be sorted by cluster, by school, by activity as relates to the ADA Americans with Disabilities Act, the key categories. We've plugged in the 09, the 2009 assessment data that was escalated cost-wise through 2014, and we've minused out of this plan all the work, 50-some million, that was accomplished by bringing Roosevelt and Franklin and Fabian online, and minused out the work that will be done on grant as well. So we already have a big lift, 50, 75 million has been accomplished by doing the large-scale projects. We just want to keep that in mind as we do Benson and Lincoln and Madison and Kellogg the same thing. So we are removing that, as well as no lead paint, no asbestos, no radon, those kind of things. Facilities Condition Assessment, so this is really imperative as part of our future. We have our Request for Proposals out. We are going to have teams open literally every door in the district in the next year, take photos, download. We're going to take all the FCA, the Facilities Condition Assessment items, put them through a ranking, some of this with our stakeholder input, and come up with an FCI. The FCI is our Facilities Condition Index. That will tell us exactly why we're going to the schools that we're going to and what their condition is, and of course, we need to update that, because a roof that was only a three yesterday could be a two today, it's worse than it was last year. So the FCI is our roadmap and how we carry out facilities money, bond money, and Maintenance and Operations money, but also how you roadmap your path forward to Bond Measure Three. Okay? So that's, we're excited about the work, we're glad for the opportunity to get it done. I've worked in many school districts, and they always dream of having this done. This has been funded, this is ready to start the process of interviewing, selecting, and start things off this summer, and it's nice to have a roadmap. Then our roadmap wraps in with what Superintendent Burrows talked about, is the strategic plan for the district and learning, and all of a sudden, we're looking at our facilities, and how do you bring these together, right? Because everything right now is just, it's on its own right now. So this is our operations side of meeting instruction, curriculum side, and becoming a district strategic plan, so we're excited about it. Radon is seasonal. I will say that January this month is radon awareness month. Don't know if you knew that or didn't, see?
We're in good company.
You're all smarter than you were when you got here. So OHA is also promoting their radon awareness month, and we've been told that they might highlight some of our projects and procedures and things that we've done so far, and their promotional materials. And this is another website right here. You want to know everything about what we have on radon and documented, please, or anyone from the community, you go to our website. You know, I hear a lot that we're not transparent. Maybe we just have too much on the website, it's very difficult. We actually track how long it takes someone to go in and how long it takes them to find something. We try to rotate things back up on the front page of our web. It's difficult. We track people 20 minutes on our website trying to get somewhere, and it's like, nobody should have to do that. So we're trying to pull things back out and cycle them on the front first page, and our people in the Sipit Department are very good at doing that for us. And security cameras, we're just starting this conversation, or security. So we, I will be talking to the principals in a couple days at the leadership meeting, Principal Leadership Meeting, and what we're trying to do is gather input from them. We have work orders, we have repairs, we know what we think they're looking for in the way of what's most important site by site. Is it cameras? Is it buzzers for lockdown front door? Is it fencing? We have $5 million that has to stretch as far as that can stretch, and so we want input so we use the money wisely. And so we're just starting the, we're going to put a survey out to them instead of trying to get to 90 sites and find out what are your most important things, and what do you think provides the safety and security at your site? And then we'll bring that back, and we'll prioritize it, and then we'll operationalize it. And again, we're not going to wait until four years from now before someone gets cameras, because it saves us some money while we're doing the roof, while we're doing the fire sprinkler. I can see us rolling these out on an ongoing basis. And that's it. So there's been a lot there. I just want to go over the intermediate, which we're leaving now. We have all the background right now, so January, February, start up some stakeholder meetings, start talking about this is what we're thinking on doing with these priorities at these sites, what do you all think? That's the ready, that's the future engagement we're ready for right now. We've ended the intermediate, we're just wrapping up the intermediate, and so we're excited about where it's going. It's a lot of work, and I know this is the It's a lot of work, and I know this is the HSA update, but our teams are doing the same thing over on the other six-hundred-and-forty million with Kellogg and Madison starts their design advisory group soon. And then, we go to Lincoln and then Benson, and I'll just tell you, for the abatement and demolition of existing Kellogg, we got twenty-one contractors and subcontractors on our job block the other day. So, generally, about half of those will actually bid the work, which we're extremely excited about. We're extremely excited about. A quick update on Tubman. We have procured the services for a design-build, well, middle school overall, for a design-build architect contractor for Tubman, a design-build architect contractor for the rest of the schools in the conversion. We have contracted with a geotechnical company for Tubman to do the stabilization of the building and to the hillside. We formally can release right now, we have contracted with an environmental consultant. You recall, we've had presentations from one in California. We've had, it didn't fit with either a committee or a board meeting presentation from PSU. Extremely impressed with what we saw from PSU and our local folks here, and we have moved forward and we have awarded the environmental for Tubman to PSU. Complete with wind tunnels, complete with, they were, by starting them now, by February first, first week in February, we're going to have equipment up on Tubman and start to do our monitoring, so we can get as much monitoring done as soon as possible. We are doing fluid dynamic studies on what is coming off the highway and what does that look like. We're doing the whole thing. So, we had eleven items in your board resolution. As with everyone we spoke to, about four to six are really the key, you know, if you really want to know what's going on. And so, PSU is going to do six activities and testing back again this fall. Typically, all your testing would be up until you occupy, but with the fact that I'm assuming, because of these eighteen-month projects, the longer, are going to be eight months, I'm assuming that we aren't going to have everything buttoned up on Tubman until school begins, you know, from the roof, from the new HVAC, from all the other work, in order to have that sealed environment where you can test it again. So, we've asked them to come back and bring the equipment back out again and remobilize and test again this fall for a three-month window. And so, we were just very impressed with the quality and amount of people they had on staff who know how to do this, and getting some graduate students to assist in the process as well.
I just want to say, we did have a really thorough conversation in our FAO meeting about the testing protocols and narrowing the scope so that we're really just investing in the essential information that we need and not spending too much money that otherwise we could be spending on kids or on mitigation measures that we know we need to have to make the building habitable. So, that was a really fruitful discussion, and thanks for the update on the contracting process.
No, you're welcome. The original estimates were in about a $1.3 million range, as I recall. We've got this on a five-hundred, six-hundred, so thousands. So, it's enough diligence, you know why you're doing what you're doing, but you're not doing all these things, so, you know, so the funds go elsewhere and where they needed to go. I just wanted to add, there are contractors, within two weeks, they rolled out and did assessment over winter break, and even this week, they're on site. And they owe me their schedule, their path forward, how failure is not an option, and how we're going to hit August, and they owe me the information next two weeks, and I'll be sitting with them, meeting, and then I'll be able to come back and put everything up on the screen and show you how we intend to do the crazy. Questions, please.
Any questions from board members?
Just, Jerry, thanks.
You're welcome.
Great information. A quick question about security cameras.
Yes.
Ballpark figure for installing one of those?
You know, that's difficult, because is the infrastructure already there? Is there electrical? Is there wiring? Or, you know, where are you taking it back from? Is this thing that might be on the back corner of a site, but we need to be able to have the monitor up in the, you know, in the principal's office? And then, it gets bigger at a middle school and bigger at a high school, so I'm sorry. But if you had to on average, I think around $15,000, something like that.
Yeah, I just wanted a ballpark.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Keep it up.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is staff comments, and I'd like to invite Suzanne Cohen.
I wanted to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and I am the president of the Portland Association of Teachers, representing four thousand five hundred educators in PPS. And as I believe I've told you all individually, I am very eager to build a productive, working relationship with district leaders and our union, and I'm very excited about the prospect of working together to get PPS back on track. And we want a functioning district, and we want to support you in these efforts, but our partnership will not compromise our values or ignore problems. And so, since the new board took office in July, and since your arrival Superintendent Guerrero, we have heard a lot of promising statements about how we will work together. But I want to make it clear tonight that the professional educators in this district will be judging you on your actions, not on your words. And unfortunately, one of the very first actions we must judge this new administration by is how you've handled the shortage of facilities, and in particular, how this affects the situation at Pioneer. Lofty rhetoric about a better program and a new location rings pretty hollow when staff members are being forced to beg for the bare essentials, like a gym, or a library, or a cafeteria. Our Pioneer community is not engaged in a visioning process, they are fighting for the very basics of an equitable educational opportunity for our most vulnerable students. Visioning and kind words will not meet these students' needs, they require space and resources. There is flawed math in the district's calculations for the space and square footage requirements for the Pioneer program, because your formulas don't seem to factor in all the equipment, additional adults, and extra space required in this type of setting. And the fact is, you made this decision without any input from the school staff. And why should the Pioneer community have any confidence when we all see what's happening at Franklin High School? The very first PPS building constructed under the bond has resulted in an incredibly inequitable physical space for our special education students, which pretty much everyone recognizes. But for most of you, I know that this was before your time, but I hope you can understand the frustration that every one of us feels when we see such a disconnect between decision-makers and our school communities. It would have taken the Franklin staff and special ed community there about ten minutes to point out the problems of putting a specialized classroom in the basement from accessibility issues and the way it isolates these students from the rest of the school. And yet, nothing has been done to mitigate the inequities at Franklin, despite agreement that it is a problem. And while the exact configuration of Franklin might have been before your time, moving the Pioneer program is your decision. And it feels like we're some sort of educational version of The Hunger Games, where one group of vulnerable students is being pitted against another. Why should access a group of students with very specific needs, which has fought for years to get their own space, be forced to compete with Pioneer, which serves their students with some of the most challenging of educational situations? And what kind of disruptions are in store for the Head Start students? Students that come from economically disadvantaged homes if Applegate has to move to make way for Pioneer? What do these three schools have in common? They all serve vulnerable student populations. And while it hasn't gotten much attention, I do want to point out that this all started with your decision to continue providing space in a public building to Kairos, a charter school. A building which is desperately needed by PPS's own students. It's why so many of us have been pushing for more transparency and accountability from PPS. And these problems will continue until you recognize that involving teachers and parents and students in real decision-making is not optional, it's essential. I really do believe that you have gotten a better sense of these issues through the very meaningful conversations we've had at the bargaining table. But as I've said before, educators are looking at what you do far more than what you say. And the reason I'm here with so many of my colleagues tonight is because we still haven't translated those meaningful conversations into a signed contract. Settling our contract this weekend is a critical way of showing the educators across PPS that your words mean something. We've been working five-hundred-and-fifty-six days without a contract. We need a fair settlement this weekend. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have the step-three complaint, complainants available?
Is Frank and Mia Castrina?
All right, thank you. Thank you for your attention tonight, and we trust your support of Mia's opportunity to dance with Lincoln High School Dance. Lately, Mia ultimately chose to attend St. Mary's in support of specific educational needs. She did so after confirming with Lincoln and St. Mary's that she could try out for the Lincoln Dance team, as St. Mary's does not offer a team. And after learning that other St. Mary's girls before her had participated with Lincoln Dance, she tried out and made the team. She's not a star athlete trying to juke the system, nor seeking to be an exception. In September, the district athletic office denied Mia's participation at Lincoln, citing the given current policy language post the boundary change at our address to access to Wilson, and that Mia should dance there. Wilson Athletics confirmed to us they do not offer a dance program nor field a team. Lincoln is Mia's neighborhood school that offers a dance program. But more importantly, Mia applied to Lincoln as we believe district policy already provides her that choice. We are a Portland public school family with two children through Bridget Mile and Sylvan, and both tracking toward Lincoln. Board resolution 5256 provides to limit a number of impacted families like ours for a student like Mia to choose her school. Mia chose Lincoln. Last year as an eighth grader, she forecasted for freshman classes at Lincoln and was assigned a counselor at Lincoln. And she chose Lincoln to continue with the friend, classmate, and peer community that she's been a part of her whole life, and to continue with the dance teammates and coach that she's been building bonds with, training, performing, and competing with for three years now. In short, if not for the boundary change, we actually wouldn't be here tonight. But because of it, Mia's choice to attend St. Mary's or her address shouldn't waive her right to participate with Lincoln Dance if they choose to have her, which they are. There's really no question here with the district. If St. Mary's did not work out for Mia, she could attend Lincoln. She's made her choice on Lincoln clear from the beginning, and the board resolution provides for that for her. In the end, we're asking for the board to acknowledge that the spirit and intent of the same resolution that provides for Mia to choose Lincoln as her school would also include something as foundational as the athletic program that goes with that school, in this case, dance for Lincoln for Mia. It's been very encouraging to have so much support from the community and district offices at all levels as we've gone through this process, we appreciate that. But we're also hopeful that, and it's going to be gratifying to see a young woman stand up for something that she believes she's passionate about, believes is common sense, and that's reasonable and fair to ask for. We're hopeful that you agree as well. We also hope that Mia's opportunity to dance in high school isn't sacrificed in order for the board to clarify this policy at a later date. She's already effectively lost most of her freshman year, sitting on the sidelines waiting. Tonight, Mia is asking for clarity from the one district body that can be her advocate in this moment, at this point in time. Thank you for listening and for considering her.
I wanted to thank you so much for hearing my case tonight. I know it'd be easy to see this as unimportant, because I'm just one girl, but this means the world to me. Last time I told you about my connection to this team, the friendships and the relationships that I've built over the last three years, and how important they are to me. I look around this room tonight and I'm overwhelmed by the support of my teammates and my coach, Keely. Thank you all for coming. I'm sorry for repeating myself, so I just want to state three things I think are the most important for you to know about my case. The first is that I struggled over my decision to attend St. Mary's over Lincoln with all my friends. I still think of Lincoln as my school. On Friday nights, I'm at football games like everyone else. Before I chose St. Mary's, I asked my parents to make sure I could still dance for Lincoln if I attended St. Mary's. We were told I could if I made the team, since other girls from St. Mary's have danced for Lincoln's dance team before. I never meant to ask for special treatment in this. The second thing is that dancing is the only sport that I participate in, is a year-long commitment that I take very seriously. I love the sport for so many reasons. It keeps me physically fit, it teaches discipline, commitment, and how to be a good team member. It helped me learn to be a team leader last year when I was elected as one of the team captains. I've gained so much confidence being on this team. Honestly, don't know what I'd, honestly don't think I'd be able to stand up and speak at something like this if I didn't have the experience of competing in front of large audiences. This is the only chance I have to dance like this. St. Mary's does not offer a dance team, and neither does Wilson. This is it for me. If you say no to me tonight, my dance team experience is over for me. I won't get to dance on a dance team. I'm asking for your help tonight. I'm asking for you to let me continue to pursue the sport that I love. Thank you.
On December 5th, 2017, the board voted in favor of hearing a step-three complaint appeal. Since that date, the board has received additional written information on the complaint. Tonight, the board will decide whether to deny the appeal and uphold the superintendent's decision, or approve the appeal in favor of the complainant. I'd like to begin to open the public hearing for the step-three complaint and ask for discussion of the board. The board will now consider resolution 5560. Board members, when making your motion, please indicate whether the motion is to deny or approve the step-three complaint. Do I have a motion and a second?
To deny or approve?
To deny or approve.
I thought it was discuss.
Well, we need a motion that specifies whether...
So, my motion would be to deny?
To, well, okay, so, a motion to approve would uphold the superintendent's decision. A motion to deny...
Right. How long a motion is to...
To approve. Okay. Director Rosen moves, and Director Espaza Brown seconds the motion to adopt...
Hang on.
...resolution number 5560 to approve...
Is that what you intended to...
The superintendent's...
To, is that what you intended to second? Okay, didn't seem like it.
Okay, we can have a discussion. So, we have a motion on the table to approve the superintendent's decision.
I don't think the motion has been seconded.
It hasn't been seconded yet.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. Director Rosen moves, and Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt resolution number 5560 to approve the superintendent's decision on the step-three complaint. Do we have board discussion?
Okay, so, when I read our superintendent's analysis, I agree with his analysis in that I think the whole boundary decision that was made previously by a previous board left things up in the air, and considering this specific case up in the air. And given that, I think you arrived at a pretty good reading of what was going on. However, I think we should step in as a board and rectify that situation. Yeah, I mean, I think the... As I read the OSAA policy, it's that regardless of where a student attends school, they should have the right to participate in a sport. And if we're, when we look at this case, the question is, what is the school of record? And again, looking at where the previous board left it, the school of record would be Wilson. But when we think of if she was going to attend Portland Public Schools, it would be Lincoln. So, really...
But the language, the OSAA language is not school of record. It is the boundary, the school...
Attendance.
Attendance boundary area where the student lives, and the student's school attendance boundary area is Wilson, although you're correct that her school, she was grandfathered into attendance at Lincoln. But the lang, OSAA language...
No, I'm, yeah, thank you for that, yeah, thank you for that clarification. But I, to me, the, the spirit of, what I think the spirit should be of this whole boundary change grandfathering thing is that, you know, she has the right to attend Lincoln, and we should treat it that way.
Yeah.
Well, and again, that's up to us to clarify what's going on.
Well, I think it's a difficult decision, but I think that Mia and her family have made a choice to attend St. Mary's, and that we should leave the opportunity open for a student who's also competing to be on the dance team that actually lives in the district. So that's why I'm deciding it's a competitive sport, and if Mia gets a place on the team, then another student that attends Lincoln doesn't.
Okay, could we, could we ask, this is a board discussion, so in order for us to have a full, a frank and honest exchange of views on the board, we need to be able to hear each other.
Yeah, so could we get clarification on that? Because I've read both things and heard both things, I just...
Clarification on what?
Um, are there limited spots on this team?
It's a competitive sport.
There's the coach.
Do you want to ask, should I answer? Um, I...
Please.
I advise the principal, do you know who can come up there? Yeah. Hi, I'm Keely. I, I don't pick a team, I don't pick a size of a team before auditions, so there's, there's not a limited spot. I could take up to 50. That's an OSAA rule. 50 is the cap. I could take six. So I pick the team based on who's at auditions, not the based on some random number that I, that I want to fill. In particular with Mia's case, last year, there were girls that kind of made a waitlist, basically, and I gave them the opportunity to take a summer and work on things and retry out. They did not do that. So Mia did not take anyone's spot. And I just want to make that extremely clear, that she is not taking a spot away from another Lincoln student, so.
But, so are you saying that if Mia hadn't made the team, she would have been put on the waitlist too? In other words...
In last year's particular case, Mia had the skill level to make the team. Those who were waitlisted, basically, I said, here are the things that I need you to work on, and you have this amount of time, and we'll reevaluate at the end of the summer. And when I contacted them, they said they had decided to, to not continue.
And so how many students are on the team now?
That's what I was going to ask you.
There are 31, not including Mia. So it would be 32.
And what's the largest team? How long have you been the coach?
This is my third year. I've been coaching the West Sylvan Dance Team for 12 years, and I was on Lincoln myself and West Sylvan.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I was just making an obvious observation about the conundrum here is, family has brought forth a formal request at step one and two. Staff should not be in the business of interpreting or guessing the board's intent. We should be implementing board policy, and board policy as articulated is a bit gray in this area. So I would only ask that, you know, as you consider this specific case, that in this topic area, or many others, where grandfathering could be an issue, I would invite the board to sort of review those if you're going to, you know, if, if we find ourselves having a lot of cases like these, so that staff has specific clarity about how to manage these requests.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is on us, not on staff at all.
I mean, I guess it's for that reason that I feel that it isn't clear in this grandfathering. It's just, it's been so difficult that, and that there's room on the team, and that in fact, she's not taking anybody's place. And knowing how important sports are, you know, for students, and I think in particular girls, that I would be in favor of allowing her to be on the team.
I just want to say that I think that the advice of the district athletic director is absolutely solid, and the analysis of the OSAA guidelines is absolutely solid, and that's what informed the superintendent's decision to deny this. However, there is definitely some gray area here, and the difference between what was clearly referred to as her school of record and the OSAA definition of the boundary area in which she currently resides is where we have this gray area, and I think that the benefit of the doubt should go with compassion and with the student. And then we have a policy subcommittee that can, you know, easily amend these resolutions that have to do with grandfathering, and, I mean, we really should just refer to the school of record, because this is an issue sometimes as well with families that move into a boundary area, thinking that they are going to be assigned to a particular school because all the other students there go to that school, but there's been a change that's made subsequently. So, I mean, this is an isolated unusual incident that you were stuck in the middle of, but it's, it's, there are likely to be other situations like it that can emerge. So should we choose to accept your, your complaint, or to, to reject the superintendent's action, we as a board will commit to reviewing our own policies and cleaning them up.
And I think that with any policy, I mean, we're here for students.
Yeah.
And you made the right call, but it is a gray area now that we do need to fix, but ultimately, if it's in the student's best interest. And it is not keeping anybody else that is a Lincoln student from a spot that seems worth it.
And I'd just like to say that I agree with Director Bailey. I think you put that very well. Thank you. I don't think that we should be in the business of denying opportunity to kids when it's at all possible to help it. I do hear that this is an ongoing issue, particularly in the Jefferson area with its dual enrollment, and that students are being denied the opportunity to participate there. I would hope that that would give us some urgency in coming up with a appropriate policy.
Okay, I'm just going to say a couple things, and I might be an outlier here. I haven't delved into athletics at all until this, so this is all kind of new to me, and I spent some time this afternoon reading up on OSAA rules, which is like watching paint dry. And I have a question. I, I have to wonder why we allow OSAA to mandate an independent school district to, to subsidize athletic activities of students who are not district students. And that may be a dragon I can't slay, but I just want to put it on the record that choices are made. Choices have consequences. Our responsibility as a school district is to provide as many opportunities to our students as we possibly can. Our job is not to subsidize private schools. Secondly, I think this is yet another example of why we need to take a very serious look at our habit of grandfathering around boundary issues. We've been doing this off and on for as long as I've been paying attention, and from what I can see, every single time we do it, it wreaks havoc with all kinds of things that we're trying to plan as a district. And it seems to me that grandfathering is a way for the school board to punt, that we don't want to make a difficult decision and make people angry. And from where I sit, which is right here, part of our job is to make difficult decisions, and grandfathering is a weasely way to make a decision. We're making boundary changes because we have enrollment imbalances all over this district. And we all know it, and we've been talking about it for a very long time, certainly for the last four years. I've been involved in these boundary issues for at least nine years. It's getting old, especially since we really haven't solved any of the issues that have been identified for at least a decade or more. And when we try to do these boundaries and then say, oh, but we're not going to actually make anybody comply with these boundary decisions for as long as they stay in a school, you know, until they reach the highest grade of a school, that means that we're making a boundary decision in order to change, to rebalance enrollment across schools, but we're not actually going to rebalance that enrollment for sometimes as long as nine years out. That is frankly a stupid way to run a school district. If we have enrollment problems, we need to deal with the enrollment problems, and we need to deal with it now. Not nine years from now, ni, uh, now, because nine years from now, there are going to be all kinds of other enrollment imbalances. People will have moved, kids will have grown up, other kids will have been born. So I'm going on record right now that I'm going to be proposing in the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee that we talk about grant, the grandfathering policy. We need to make a decision one way or the other. We're either going to have it, or we're not. If we're going to have it, then we're going to have to deal with these kinds of issues over and over and over again. I don't think it's okay, because I know kids who are stuck in schools that are so under-enrolled, they have, they have been cheated out of educational opportunities for more than a decade. I don't think that's fair. We have other schools that are so vastly overcrowded, kids are sitting on the floor. We need to deal with this. So I'm going to vote to, to approve Superintendent Guerrero's decision. I fully expect that I will not prevail, and that's okay with me. I would like to, I would ask that the board put a little, put some bumpers on this decision, and say that this is, this is a, a situation of special circumstances and cannot be used in future as a precedent. And that we commit, we commit as a board to making a decision about grandfathering, up or down, we either do it or we don't. If we're going to continue to do it, then we need to make provisions for these kinds of situations.
I agree with Director Moore that we should address in policy our grandfathering policy and have it apply equally across the board. Also, for the record, with the West Side boundaries, there was no grandfathering greater than two years. So this is no nine-year solution. This is children that were already, you know, focused on a pathway that they'd been headed toward for the other five years of their education, and at the time, for good or for ill, we considered it the compassionate student-centered choice to make with regard to the boundary changes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the superintendent's decision, to uphold the superintendent's decision to deny the complaint. Can we take a vote? All in favor of upholding the superintendent's decision, please indicate, indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed?
No.
Are you trying, Julie, are you on the phone?
I am. I'm supportive of the superintendent's decision.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion fails by a vote of six to two.
Five to two.
Five, okay, nobody ever said math was my subject. Five to two, and student representative votes?
No.
Yes.
Wait.
No.
You don't want to uphold it?
Yes, no, I don't want to.
Okay, so, um, so the student's complaint is accepted, and the, the board...
I'm going to ask that you actually affirmatively vote to overturn the superintendent's decision.
Okay. Okay, so can somebody propose a resolution to overturn?
I move that we overturn the superintendent's recommendation to reject this, the substance of this complaint.
Second.
Okay, motion proposed by Director Constam and seconded by Director Anthony. All in favor, vote yes.
Yes.
No?
No.
Okay. The motion carries on a vote of five to two, with a student representative voting?
Yes.
Okay. So...
I'd like to ask for some high kicks for our trouble. Just kidding.
Are we... Okay, so, moving on to the next item. Board committee and conference reports, and the superintendent's, student, student representative report. Since our last board meeting on December 19th, following committees have met. The charter committee on December 28th, uh, December 20th, Finance Audit and Operations on January 4th, Policy and Governance on January 6th, and Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee right before this meeting. Director Anthony, would you like to provide a report on the charter committee?
I'd be very happy to do that briefly. The charter committee has had its initial meeting this year. The board needs to consider a five-year contract renewal for Le Monde, French Immersion Charter School, and we will be looking at one-year contract extensions for the Portland Village School, Portland Arthur Academy, the Emerson School, and Opel School. We will have meetings coming up very quickly here on February 7th, February 12th, and potentially on February 21st. The board will... The board will be considering these renewals on March 6th and voting on March 20th. We have a fairly strict schedule imposed on us by the state. Also on that, since there has been material in the press, I should mention that the board will not be considering Trillium Charter School this year. They are not up for renewal. We are, however, offering them technical assistance.
Thanks, Paul.
I have a question. I have a question about that with, um, Trillium and, uh, when we are within the period that the charter is not coming up for review and there are significant issues that emerge, such as the loss of leadership and a significant loss of student population, what are the provisions to intervene or address issues other than offer technical assistance?
Primarily, that's all that we are empowered to do. The only, uh, trigger that I, I've been told so far applies is failure to ma- make the state's achievement guidelines. They have done that two years in a row. If they do it a third, then it's the state's responsibility.
Seems like a long time.
Yes. I do not disagree.
Hazards of charter schools. Um, okay, uh, so, uh, Julia, would you like to report on the, um, on the Policy and Governance Committee?
So, uh, thanks Rita for chair more. So one of the policies of the, the board is if you call in, that you shouldn't be part of the substantive discussion, so I will leave it to either somebody else, um, at the table or I can provide a update at the next board meeting.
Um, we could do it at the next board meeting. How's that?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Um, and, um, I could do a little, a, a brief update on the FAO Committee. We met on January 4th, um, and you kind of heard the upshot of it when Jerry Vincent reported on the, on the Tubman Environmental Analysis, the, the environmental studies. We had a, a very good, uh, very, um, very energetic discussion about, um, how to approach the environmental study. We got a lot of really good information and, and we also got some information about, um, plans that are underway from ODOT to expand I-5 in the area just outside Tubman. Um, and we're going to be getting, um, more information as time goes on. Based on the plans that we're aware of, uh, this would be, the, the expansion would represent a significant incursion on the Tubman property. So this is something that we need to be aware of, we need to be tracking and we need to be talking to, um, state and local policymakers about, um, how PPS can protect its own property rights in the face of these plans. And that's going to be a, that's going to be a work in progress. And, um, uh, we also got, uh, we also got a report on the, on the audit, um, which came forward tonight with the resolution. Do we have any, any other committees that have met?
We had the legis- were you going to?
Oh, no, please.
Uh, were you, did you have something on the FAO? Um, we had the Legislative Committee meeting. We focused on the short session coming up in February. We have one item that we're working with legislative leadership on advancing. It's a technical fist, fix that has to do with the mechanism for the collection of local option revenue. Um, we're hopeful that, um, we can, um, address this in statute easily. Uh, we're also working with our, our partners at OSBA, COSA on these, those issues as well. We had an update on the legal team's work on our sexual harassment policy, our Title IX, um, policy as well, and those will hopefully be coming back to this committee in February for review of the draft that we can advance just as quickly as humanly possible back to the board for adoption. It's something we've been working on for a long time. Um, it has not stalled, but, um, we're, we're looking forward to getting that enshrined in policy. It's really important work. Thank you, Liz Large, our general counsel. Uh, we also, um, had a brief conversation about just our, our work plan for this committee and the items that we have before us in the next, um, you know, four to six months, a couple of which I mentioned, and then really focusing in the latter part of the year on proactively developing a legislative agenda for the 2019 session. So, um, is there anything you would like to add to any of that? Um, just the other issues that we're looking at and working on are improving our intergovernmental coordination with the city and the county and MESD on all of the joint services we provide to figure out, um, how we can align better and, um, improve our services to kids by having stronger working relationships.
Director Anthony?
A slightly different subject, uh, but since I started out by talking about the mindfulness program at Marysville, which is absolutely wonderful, I wanted to come back to the subject at the end and why it's so important. Uh, you may recall that two months ago, we had the OSBA convention and I talked briefly about a presentation that Lines for Life, our local suicide prevention hotline gave, which was also excellent. But they talked about a particular book. They encouraged people to read. It's by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is part of the Department of Human Services, and it's on suicide prevention in high schools. I got it. I've read it. Two hundred and eight pages, very comprehensive, very authoritative, and very, very practical. I think it would be excellent if our senior administration, our directors, our principals, our counselors, and our school psych councils would take a look at this. And it is free. If you go to SAMHSA.gov and give them your name and address, they'll send it to you.
That's fantastic.
And Lines for Life, some of you have heard me say this before, but as an update, nine years ago, they started a youth suicide prevention hotline. Nine years ago, they took 500 calls. 2016, they took over 10,000.
Oh, God.
Last year, they broke 14,000. I've got a MBA and a whole lot of experience with finance and I can use that very expensive fancy pants education to tell you, that's a really big number. For those of you who are still lucky enough to have your hair, it should be on fire. Thank you.
Any other board members?
Just enrollment and, uh.
Forecasting.
Forecasting. Uh, we'll be meeting next Tuesday. And apparently, again, we're going to talk about grandfathering.
Okay, then.
Among other things.
Student Representative Tran, do you have a report?
Next board.
Okay.
And teaching and learning, I had the flu. It's postponed until the 17th.
And FAO will be meeting on the 16th.
HSA's meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay. Um, okay, so if I, if I've been keeping track, I think we have finished all our business, correct? Okay. Is there any other business that a board member would like to discuss before we adjourn? Okay, I think we're done. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Wait, wait. Yeah.